Good evening, everyone. It is my honor to call together the Goose and Board of Supervisors for our joint work session.
I call the order the Goose and Planning Commission for our June 15th work session.
Thank you, sir. So, welcome, everybody. We thought there might be a crowd, which is amazing, considering you could have watched this all live stream. So it's great to see everybody's faces. There are agendas on the back wall, and we'll have things on the screen as well. We'll start the meeting with an invocation that I'm honored to give, and then Chair Rocket Charlie will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. So please stand if you're able. Heavenly County, we thank you, heavenly God, we thank you for this community that you've put together, Lord. You've brought us here all for a reason, and this is what we, where we call home, Lord. We're just trying to make the best decisions we can so that we can serve the citizens of this great community, Lord, and that we can ultimately serve you, God. So please, we invite you here now, as we speak, give us wisdom to make the plans that are going to help our county be the county that you intended to be. In your sins' name, we pray. Amen.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, unencouraged, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please, we see it. So this is, so this is a little different than a normal meeting, if you've come to our board meetings. We're really just gonna have an opportunity, as the two boards, to talk, to figure out where we are with these plans, where we want to go. And we're gonna start this with a staff presentation by our Deputy County Administrator, Ms. Crystal Onitis.
We got a new mic. Good evening. I'm Crystal Onitis, Deputy County Administrator, as Mr. Spoonhauer said. It's a pleasure to be in front of you all, supervisors and commissioners. Just want to tee everything up of an overview of where we are with our plan and the path forward that we have. Is it not on? Sorry. And where we are. So currently, we have gone through with the Centerville Small Area Plan that is proposed. We have had a community open house, and we've also held a public hearing at the Planning Commission. We received a good amount of public feedback on that. So tonight, before you, you will actually have an opportunity to review and consider that. With the goal of the joint work session, with the Planning Commission and the board, to be establishing a path forward for the Centerville Small Area Plan, going over those primary concerns in the draft plan and solutions that can be developed so that we can make sure that we're responsive, we're promoting workability and clarity with these plans. And with that, I'm gonna turn it over to our consultants with Timmons Group, Mr. Chuck Rapp.
Thank you. Good evening, members of the Board, Planning Commission. Thanks for this, this opportunity to speak with you about these plans and hopefully have a good dialogue this evening and find our path forward. So with that, we have a small PowerPoint presentation to help guide some of that, that conversation and talk about some of the comments and maybe some proposed solutions to move forward. So this evening, we'll talk a little bit about some of the, the community feedback from prior to the open house and the public hearing, as well as afterwards, and then lay out some options that were, we've developed for how to address some of that feedback and have a discussion with you all and hopefully find that path. So I wanted to start with, if you remember back in, when we started this process with you all back in late February, early March, we spent several weeks just coming through the existing comments from the, the previous efforts from your, your prior consultant, reading through all the different public comments, the survey results, watching the, the hearing videos, the community meetings, talking with staff, and trying to figure out what were some of those key themes that were expressed by the community. So we were starting with, there's a heavy desire to really focus on height, size, and landscaping associated with future development. So the way we tried to address that in the initial draft was by really focusing on building form and scale and that relationship to streets, trying to promote the pedestrian realm with pedestrian-oriented buildings with internal streets and sidewalks, and then recommendations for zoning text amendments to help support that, as well as development of additional design guidelines that would, they would really focus on some of that built form. There's also a desire to really emphasize place-making, particularly in the Centerville area, and preservation of community character. So we tried to develop some ideas for landscape features along the primary roadways, as well as on the, the key intersections in the village. Opportunities for small business were also expressed, so the strong desire to really promote that. So we tried to really emphasize that building form and the scale by focusing in the, in the core area to have smaller building forms of three stories in height and building off of that, where, and pushing the larger buildings out to the exterior near the interchange. We also recommended developing a strategic business plan to really identify those target industries and those businesses and find ways to incentivize those, incentivize those. There's a strong desire expressed for publicly accessible recreation and community gathering spaces. So we developed different types of greenway corridors where they might potentially be along some of the floodplains and existing streamways. Also identified some, some areas for potential recreation through, through additional park space and green space, and then also encouraged the idea of a public plaza in the core area as well, that could be kind of that community center's focus. There's also a strong desire to, to promote single-family homes and mixed-use residential options that were at affordable scale. So we identified a couple of different housing types and where those would go in the different designations, and we really tried to restrict that multifamily to the mixed-use, within the mixed-use designations, and identified guidelines to promote the right form or the right height, so that they were contextually appropriate and fit that, the existing character of some of the buildings that were either existing or proposed. Unless there were a lot of concerns about density and growth, just in general, as this is a growth area and what that density might be. And so we tried to identify limits, ranges for the neighborhood residential and the single-family residential, and then in the mixed-use areas, we really focused on compatible building form and maximum height limitations, so that those were of an appropriate scale with those mixed-use options to provide that flexibility as well. And we also recommended the development of what's called a pattern book. A pattern book is really to, to talk about the built form and how those, this buildings might be, the sizes, the relationships, and really take that, those, some of those ideas to a more definitive scale, and that can even be codified in the ordinance in the future. So we have this map in here. This, this is how we tried to relate that. This is really just on here as a talking point that we can go back to as we discuss some of these things, but it kind of talks about the intent of each district, or each district that we created, the different uses, the building heights, relationships to streets, parking, things like that. We use that, we presented a lot of that during the, the public hearing with the Planning Commission. And so here's, here's some of our list, the list of a lot of the feedback that we, that was spoken about when we had this public hearing with the Planning Commission two weeks ago. So we certainly heard a desire to increase the height and the mixed-use transition and/or include the area south of Broad Street into the, the mixed-use core. We also heard some residents that were south of that mixed-use transition area express support of the two-story height limit, worried about the three-story cores extending onto the south side. So we're trying to balance that. We also certainly heard a lot of concern from residents of the Sycamore Creek and the Tuckahoe Bridge neighborhoods about buffering or additional transition zones to ensure that there, there wasn't a stark contrast with a larger three-story mixed-use development right up against their, their neighborhood. Similar, similar concerns were expressed from residents of Bellevue Gardens, designing some kind of a transition or buffering from the mixed-use around that mixed-use commercial area at the interchange as well, as well as the economic development property just behind them. There was some concerns expressed about lodging in the mixed-use core area and the flexibility of the mixed uses to ensure that there was some, you know, we talked about live work so that it could be multiple opportunities, didn't have to necessarily be live work, ensuring that we had those options in there within the mixed-use core. There were some concerns expressed about the future study area to the south. And so we recognized that maybe it was a little vague there, and there's some work to do on that. And then there's also concerns about greenways, the locations of them, as well as road alignments, and ensuring that those are appropriate and within the designation of the boundary of the small, small area plan as well. So with that, we spent some time trying to figure out how could we address those. And so first and foremost, one of the ones we wanted to recommend was go ahead and recommend extending that, that mixed-use core to the southern side of Broad Street to acknowledge those concerns that were expressed and create that, that, that potential for, for the core to extend on both sides. And then as a way to address a lot of the concerns about transitions, we would recommend developing a transition page or two within this plan. They would talk about transition between mixed-use areas, so mixed-use core and the mixed-use commercial, as well as the economic development land when it abuts residential. And providing, as a similar approach that we did throughout these plans, of providing a variety of options that could be chosen singly or combined, some combination of, which would, the first of which would be height limitations or what we call stepbacks. So you typically would identify a particular distance from that residential category where buildings need to step down so that you don't have a larger building up against a residential development. Another option is increased setbacks, just ensuring that that mixed-use zone has, has larger setbacks when it does abut residential to, again, reduce that impact. Then the third one is additional buffers. That could be landscaping, it could be natural buffers, it could be walls, a variety of things that could also be used, again, to hopefully lessen the impacts that it might have on a residential development adjacent to it. There's also some, as I mentioned, some questions about the mixed-use core. So we wanted to provide some additional language that we would recommend for lodging and really reference appropriately scaled lodging. So when we talked about lodging in that mixed-use core, the idea was, you know, if you remember, we recommended up to three stories in that mixed-use core. So we're not talking about a five-story big hotel, six-story hotel. We're talking about something appropriately scaled that integrates into that existing building form. And so when you think about lodging in that aspect, it's more of the boutique hotel-type approach, something smaller that really fits. Fits in, fits into that mixed-use walkable environment. And then as well, it really reiterate this idea of any combination of those primary uses. So it might be, doesn't necessarily have to be residential above office or something, or retail. It could be office above retail. It could be any mixture of those different uses that you have listed as primary within that mixed-use core to really create that flexibility, depending on market conditions and what's being proposed. We would also recommend some additional, incorporating some additional language to clearly define that future study area to the south of this, so that it really has a boundary and it defines exactly what that future study is, so that you'll have the roadmap to move forward with, with that in a future time. And the last, with greenways and roads, really ensure that they are confined to this small area plan boundary and really note that they're conceptual alignments only at this, at this stage. And, you know, more detailed alignment would have to come at a future time as you would move forward with any of those projects and start to vet some of those. So that was really what we, what we prepared as, as a way to hopefully guide some discussion, and hopefully that will, we're hoping that that addresses the, the balance of the different comments that we've heard, addresses some of the concerns about heights and transitions and things like that between the different areas to, to make this a more compatible plan. So with that, I'll certainly open up to questions and start wherever you would like.
Thank you, Mr. Rapp.
Sure.
Ms. Onitis, do you have thoughts on moving forward if I look at item 2C, its adjustments to consider? Or did you, did you want us to go into discussion now? I'm just looking at the agenda.
So again, what you all have before you are, I love this clicker. We have laid out in an effort to try to meet what we heard as common themes from the open house, as well as the public hearing, the common themes and trying to work to meet those halfway or as best to our ability as we can with balancing the idea that, you know, that we had a lot of comments that somewhere over here, somewhere over here are trying to meet things in the middle. I think based on that, we're at a good point to try and have some discussion. I will say, we have the current land use map up on this screen, and then this is the proposed options that can be used to address the concerns on the screen behind you. So as a point of reference for you all to discuss, and we're happy to answer any questions.
And what, what, from staff's perspective, what is staff hoping to walk away this evening with?
At this point, we are hoping to get very clear direction on the path forward as far as any changes or outstanding concerns that commissioners or board members have with things that need to be adjusted in these plans for workability, clarity, and/or responsiveness.
Okay. And if, if we get to that point, can you talk a little bit about what the next steps are for this process?
And if we're able to obtain clear direction tonight and there's consensus, there are several options that could occur. One mainly being, since there was a deferral at the Planning Commission for the Centerville Small Area Plan, we could proceed. And staff's recommendation would be to proceed back to a public hearing for the Centerville Small Area Plan, obviously making changes that get discussed this evening, going through the public notice process, posting again adjusted and revised plans, and then taking that to the board.
Okay. So, so from here, so we have the work session tonight, it's gonna be open discussion between the two boards. We will provide our recommendations, and then the citizens will have an opportunity, both at the next Planning Commission meeting, if this is scheduled for that, if we arrive at that consensus. And there'll be another public hearing, so there'll be two more opportunities for public comments.
Correct, Mr. Spoonhauer. What I will say is tonight would be a great opportunity to discuss a consensus on a date for the Planning Commission to have a public hearing, and then the July 6th work session could officially announce a date to move forward so that we're continually reiterating it and allowing the community to know when the next public hearing is coming and the next opportunity for the comment period.
Thank you very much for answering those questions. We just want to get us all kind of aligned of our, this is kind of unique. I think we've done this once before, since I've been on the board, so it should be a, it should be time. So, Boards, how would you like to proceed? Yes? Mr. Meyer.
Are they saying now that they are proposing having the same use on the south side of Broad Street as they are on the north now?
We are. So we would say just basically eliminate the mixed-use transition and just label that area as mixed-use core. And hopefully with the addition of the, the transition options, when it abuts residential, it addresses the concerns about extending that for the benefit of, of the mixed-use core, as well as the concern about the impacts to the residential neighborhoods.
Yeah, that was a sticking point in the public hearing.
Correct, Mr. Myers, and if I may, I know in the Planning Commission public hearing, you all as a body of commissioners had questions as to why north and south of Broad were differentiated. This would alleviate that and create some continuity with it all being one category.
Ms. Onitis, another piece of this is, we had a really good conversation on Monday, or you and I actually, around, what does this actually mean once this plan is adopted? Does this mean, you know, in two months from now, we're gonna change every land use and all the ordinances? Or how, how is that gonna work? What should the public know of the adoption of this plan? It gets put into, as an addendum to the comprehensive plan? And then how do we go forward from there?
Going forward from here, we can deal with applications as they come in through a rezoning process in the plan of development process. And we can also begin to work on zoning ordinance amendments in coming months. I mean, and that is a very lengthy process, as well as updating design review or design guidelines. And that is actually a priority that's mentioned under the land use in the very back page of these plans. The three priorities for land use are design standards is actually priority one. Priority two is zoning updates, and priority three is economic development.
Okay. So it's not gonna be like?
It is not an overnight. No.
So it'd be a case-by-case, parcel-by-parcel? This is how, this is how we are hoping that this will be developed? But it may not necessarily be developed that way based on a lot of things, what the developer brings, the makeup of this board, citizen input, obviously.
Correct. The intent is to create and foster some flexibility, so we have good projects brought to us where we can also start a good conversation with developers for commercial and residential development. As well as any project that comes forward, there's public hearings. It goes to Planning Commission, it goes to the board, and we do notices, we put the yellow signs up that, you know, we have community meetings as well.
Yeah, I just kind of felt like, from the people I heard, there was like, once this is done, everything all of a sudden just changes and all land use changes, and that's, that's not what I'm understanding. Thank you.
Do you know how many lots or pieces of property within this area currently zoned conflict with this plan?
Off the top of my head, I cannot give you an exact number.
Eighty percent or fifty percent?
I would be hesitant to create a generalization and conflict myself.
You don't really know how many?
None off the top of my head.
Landowners are being affected by this at this point.
Now, I will say that the Centerville Small Area Plan covers 3.5 square miles in of itself. And usually there's a little over 200 square miles.
The other question was, I've gotten some comments from the people that, the residents that live all the way in the west of Mannequin Road regarding the original plan for that area. Has that been addressed in the new revised suggestions, the Sycamore Creek Residential Neighborhood?
Correct. We, we are working to, and if you look at this, we're trying to make sure that where we have differentiating land uses, that we're putting in some more protectional elements for transition areas, because it's not just the Sycamore Creek area. You have pockets of residential or smaller-scale commercial that's near your economic development in the gray. How do we create some transitional elements and have things that will naturally taper where there's a different land use? And that will come in our zoning ordinance amendment, but we're actually going to be adding pages that talk about transitional elements, as well as having it visually represented on a land use map, like you see here, similar to. So it'll be called out rather than implied for clarity.
And Boards, just a point of, or since this is a work session, you don't have to wait for the chairs to recognize you. You just put on your mics and give us your great thoughts.
It's rapid fire.
The transition area is going to be at the landowner's, the current landowner's expense, or whoever is, who's applying for the rezoning is gonna be required to bear the expense of this transition?
It would function as similar, just as, in a similar fashion as when you come in for a rezoning and there's existing setback requirements or how we have buffer requirements for certain residential developments. It would function in that similar way. So it would be on the project as it comes forward, not an existing property that's occupied.
Can you elaborate as to how large that transition area might be?
It would be dependent on the project. So you might see somewhere there's a thousand feet of transition area. I'm just giving an example, where it might be 100 or 50. It just depends on the different type of use. And also talking about, so for instance, with the south of Broad piece here, where we know we have a fair amount of existing residential and being mindful of that, we may see when a project comes forward that there's really only that sliver that immediately abuts West Broad Street Road that wouldn't even have three stories height and any significant density, and then it immediately starts to taper where you're really getting to, you know, single-family and very small setups. Because it's being mindful of that. And that, that's also, you know, just transitioning even with structure size as well when we talk about built form. Yep, go ahead.
If I could, Commissioner Duke, what I would recommend is we would, we would identify the different types of transitions and what those might be to provide kind of that, that framework for how they would be implemented. But I would recommend the specific distances or number of plants or heights of things, stepbacks. That should really be codified in your zoning ordinance, so that would be a next step. But it would at least provide this roadmap so that if a rezoning did come forward, you all as a board and as a commission could say, you know, you are adjacent to a residential area, the plan that was adopted recommends a transition, we've identified some options, so the, the applicant should, should identify one of those or a mixture of them or something else that at least satisfies the intent of what the plan intended to do there.
There are probably, probably five things that we've talked about. As issues, three come to the top of my list, and that is boundaries, the southern part of 250, and density. So, and probably a lot of people have comments on all of these. I'm in general in favor of this plan, of a plan. I think we're very close, but always it's the devil in the details, right? So the original Centerville area had Mannequin Road as the western boundary. We've now moved the western boundary west. So what are the pros and cons? I'm not seeing any pros, but maybe you can tell me what they are. Why are we doing that?
Ms. Laskowitz, to clarify, the actual boundary in of the small area plan for Centerville has not changed. The core has changed. Part of that is based on looking at approved plans of development that have already been approved. I believe there is a, right over here in this end here, there is a shopping center that has been approved through the POD process right here. There is medical office buildings through here. And when we talk about trying to create some continuity of land uses and not having something immediately adjacent conflicting, that's part of the reason.
So why, okay, so there, those zoning uses have already been approved, you said?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So then why do they have to be in the village? Why can't we transition right past that property?
Because, you know what? I'll let you take that.
Well, so we would typically try to, to place land use in broad areas that do match either what's existing or what's planned, based on approved, so that as that area continues to develop, everything is, is compatible with one another. And so since, in our discussions with staff, realizing that there were some approved plans that did fit more of the form of the village core, that's why we decided to designate it within it. And that's similar, similar to, as I mentioned, the, some of the other areas, the Bellevue neighborhood, for instance. We wouldn't want to put that, that's why we, we have that designated as the neighborhood residential versus including them and some other areas, the mixed-use area.
But does that not lessen the amount of the transition area by what you've done here?
Well, the transition would be on the, on the property of the applicant that's bringing a development for you. So we're not necessarily designating large swaths of transition. We're just saying these properties would need to be transitioned.
Okay. So I said that wrong. So the area that you have included in the core of the village, that includes west of Mannequin, right? And that's the zone, that's the area we're talking about that's already zoned, is that correct? Okay. So the core village is, includes more than just what has been rezoned, is that correct?
I will defer to our planning staff for clarity.
I agree, and I looked at the map after we talked today. It looked like it to me.
Ms. Laskowitz, the property that you're referring to, west of Mannequin Road and right behind Saddlewites, has been approved several years ago for a, kind of a shopping center type of area, is currently vacant. We do know that the, the property owner is interested and has come up with a number of ideas for that property and has almost come forward with a, a couple of different zoning cases. This is an opportunity by including this in there and having in the language in the transition area that will be part of this plan, this actually further strikes and strengthens the buffer area that would be required for the residential.
Probably not asking my question properly.
Okay, I'm sorry.
No, no, it's okay. So the core village.
Yes, ma'am.
Broad and Mannequin, west, on the west side of Mannequin, the quote shopping centers to the Saddlewhite property, I would call it generically, right? Is now in the core village. But this plan includes more than that. It's west of that. Why would that be?
Well, again, we looked at it as an opportunity. We know that there's interest in that property, and putting it in the core and having it go through, I guess, a little bit more of a rigorous look at, as opposed to it just being a, a commercial property, does add, again, value to it being a large property and having it developed in a, in a manner that is, you know, what we will require within that core district, something planned, something that's a good project, which will be required on your end. But again, that transition area that is identified there in origin potentially will, you know, if this is the direction that the board wants to go, be outlined in more detail in the plan. That would then be built in, which would, you know, potentially add additional protection to the surrounding neighborhood.
Okay. So I'm sorry, I just gotta get it straight. So, right beyond that core area, the Saddlewhite property is residential?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so this plan lessens the residential because it is a larger piece than the Saddlewhite property?
So where my, where my pointer is currently, the area that we're talking about, it is currently zoned commercial already, and is identified as commercial in the current land use plan. So it is actually just kind of just engulfing that and including that in the core village, which, you know, without the identifying transition areas, could be potentially misunderstood to think that that would be something that would be more scary to, you know, more impactful to the residential neighborhood. But if this applicant or the property owner were to come forward, it gives an opportunity to, to, you know, basically not accept something that would not provide that adequate buffering, or transition, rather.
So is there any property zoned commercial west of this property we're discussing that's not in the core village? So is there commercial opportunities there, or is that, it looks like from this map, it's residential?
Yes, ma'am. And yes, and it's currently, all of that is currently zoned and identified on the comprehensive plan as residential. And there is some commercial south of Broad Street Road. The area where the chiropractor is located over here.
Right, no, I'm just talking north of, north of.
All of that is currently zoned agricultural and, or residential, and identified in the current comp plan for residential.
So there is no commercial north abroad, west of, other than that one piece, west of Manikin and north abroad?
So there is one, yeah, there is one triangular piece. I think it's, I'm trying to think, it's probably about 10 acres. And the same property owner does own, the Manikin Crossing that was approved by the board several years ago, does own that same piece of property that is actually zoned residential, but is recommended by the current comp plan as commercial.
And so that is in this plan, that is in the core?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. If anybody's got any other questions about that, I'll move on to my next one. No, okay. South abroad, I mean, yes, south abroad, that sounds like it's a musical or something, right? So, the original, well, I don't know, whether we're original, adopted, revised, planned, did, was doing something different south abroad. So this is now more intense usage south abroad, correct?
Well, the changes that we're recommending would, yes, be to take, what we, what we currently see on the map in that, I guess, orange color, the mid and between orange color, which was the mixed-use transition, and replace it with the mixed-use core designation. So it matches what is north of Broad. So north and south of Broad would be one color there. Does that make sense?
It does, it looks like it's sort of two different colors, like it's a little light.
That's how we did it, we were trying to acknowledge the need to step down, but I think with the transition zones, you could keep it as core and it would still allow the opportunity.
There's no step down?
Correct, not until, but unless, except for in the transition zones, we would be recommending that if it abuts residential, you would think about a transition zone when it comes forward. But it's, there's no longer a mixed-use transition designation is what we're recommending.
And so I'm kind of indifferent about that. What are the pros and cons in doing what's been done here?
What it would do is allow, if you had frontage on, if you're in the south area of that and you had frontage on Broad, you could have a three-story building. And then you would, you would consider maybe stepping down as you get down to the residential just south of you, or increasing your buffer or something like that. So it would, the pros would be, from a, from a development standpoint, that property owner would have the opportunity to get to the same height as on the north side of Broad. And hopefully with the transition zone, it addresses some of the concerns of the residents that were concerned about that height. If that makes sense.
And this, and that, if we agreed to this recommended change.
Yep.
This would put us more in line with the, our current comprehensive plan.
I believe so, that, yeah, it was always showing that core in both sides, correct?
Thank you.
And I think the issue there is the three-story next to, you know, single-family residences.
Correct, and so that's where hopefully the trend, the idea of ensuring that when it, the side that abuts residential on the south there would have some form of a transition.
And again, that goes back to the fact that we're intending and proposing, as I had outlined for you in some of our discussions, having a whole section added to the plan that talks about transitional elements. What do they look like, what are types? So that then when a product, project does come forward, right? We have the ability to say, well, this is near residential. This is what you can do in the front, you're going to need to incorporate some transition tapering and other elements, right?
And are you saying that would happen now?
It could start happening now with the application process, because again, if this is adopted, it becomes an amendment to the comprehensive plan. And one of the checkboxes that you all.
I'm sorry, before you go too far. But, so my question is, are you saying that you're going to have that appendix, that, those potential transitions? I guess Mr. Lund would point out, it's actually the second bullet on the screen.
Yes, that was one of the things to have the transitional areas and transitional elements actually listed as a section within the plan.
So that would be in, that, sorry.
That would be a change we're recommending as an adjustment.
And, but, what I'm trying to get to is, and the citizens would have the ability to see that for the planning commission meeting?
Yes, sir.
Okay, that's what, that's, I'm just trying to understand. If we include these, are we, is the public going to be able to comment on that during the planning commission?
I will say that everything we have worked to lay out here before you all tonight, we, if we have consensus or direct, clear direction on it this evening, we do have the ability to work to include it for the planning commission, to have a meeting sometime late July, or early August, whatever is the quorum and ability of the planning commission. But yes, I mean, we could have something ready then and make sure that we have it out in advance of the meeting so that it is available for transparency purposes. So again, these options, they are things that we are prepared to act on and address. If that helps.
Drilling down a little bit, Ms. Laskolet asked, you know, the pros and cons. And again, it depends on which, which side you're on.
Well, that's what I'm asked, yeah.
But, and I, and I understand that, you know, the owners, property owners on the south side were, were some of the impetus for, for some changes. But obviously before, there was a mixed-use transition, and that seems to me that was there, my understanding was that was there to acknowledge that we have a lot of residential is to the south of that zone. So it, I'm just really trying to understand what is really being changed here, when we drill it down. It was a mixed-use transition. Now you're calling it a mixed-use core, but you're adding transition options and elements.
Correct. So if you, if you think.
So is building height it, is that what we're trying to do, is address building height?
Yes, sir, so originally the mixed-use transition had a limit of one to two stories. This would allow one to three stories, but it would be based on a per application.
So what other, are we losing any elements, any other elements in the mixed-use transition zone? Are you just really pulling them out and dropping them into a transition?
No, it was essentially the same category, just with a slight, just with one less story, to acknowledge that residential behind. It's a lot of the feedback that was documented from the first round of concern about the three-story buildings up against residential.
So really, you're just pulling the transition elements out of that, putting it into a section, separate option section?
Correct.
In order to allow south abroad to have the same building height that north abroad has?
Correct, and I would say, I would strongly recommend against us doing like a big overlay. I think it would just be a statement of whenever a mixed-use or an economic development designation abuts residential, there should be a consideration for transition zones, and these are the types of transition zones that are often used. And that way, it covers any situation that pops up, whether it's mixed-use commercial, the mixed-use core, or economic development up against the neighborhood, or anywhere.
And I think when you're talking about, you know, the denser, denser area, our designated growth area, where there's a lot of growth pressures, where we want to put the growth, I worry about transition, you know, additional buffers. I hope there's opportunities to do something other than just buffers, because when you, when you start taking away land for the developers just to get screening.
Yep.
I mean, there are other, there are other ways to screen and transition other than just say, we got to take a chunk of open space, right?
I totally agree, and that's why I was saying to Commissioner Duke when he was asking, it really is dependent on that situation. Maybe there's a significant topography change, you know, and the residential's 50 feet higher than the land for the commercial or something like that. So it doesn't make sense to always put, you know, a small wall or a row of trees that are never going to have an impact. So it's really, you want to, you want to think about the situation. Look at it, look at the view shed from the residential and the impact on it. I mean, that's what zoning is all about, is protecting property values for properties and ensuring that adjacent development doesn't infringe upon that property, really. So what we would want to do, you would encourage your applicants to find the right solution to appease their adjacent neighbors. Hopefully, we will lay out those options so that you have a starting point.
Mr. Evans? I know I'm going to ask you for an estimate here, but if that core south of Broad had development abutting Broad Street, what, what type of setback are we looking at from residential? I mean, in, in my mind visually, it's, it's hundreds and hundreds of feet.
I would honestly not recommend putting the distance in here so that y'all can really dial it in when you get into a zoning ordinance, because I think you want to go through quite a process to determine that. I've, for instance, Almarle County has about 150 feet, they require a step back. So, you know, if you think about, what we want to avoid is the 10-foot buffer planting. You know, it really doesn't accomplish much. And you can still have a, you know, a three-story building up against a two-story townhome, and it feels a bit oppressive. So we, I think we would want to do a pretty significant analysis as y'all work through a zoning ordinance update and you identify those options as to what they would be. Yeah.
Is it fair to say we're not approaching the 10-foot buffer issue? I don't, I don't, I don't feel like we're, if we have development near Broad Street.
Correct.
We're nowhere near.
Correct, I think, I think you have some, some, some significant sized parcels. Correct, yeah.
Puffers in phase to do this transition area.
I think so, and I've seen some great designs over the years of, of single buildings that even drop down a story to, to address concerns of adjacent residential and try and meet, meet some of their concerns, for sure. I think you have room to do both. And we would try to illustrate that, I would say.
I have a question. A gas station is, would be allowed in, in the mixed core, right?
Certainly.
Okay. Suppose we had an application for a gas station on Manikin Road right at the northern point, part of the mixed core, okay? How far would it be from the nearest house?
It would depend on the particular location that they cited on that site plan. And I would think, you would also want to think about what is the height of the gas station? Most gas stations aren't three stories, so I think you probably are doing okay. But there's even some, you know, that's where, when we talk about a pattern book, for instance, there's a lot of localities throughout the state that really get into the review of the architectural design of that canopy, for instance. Maybe it's a standing seam metal roof that has a slope to it, so it doesn't have the, you know, just this box effect. It's kind of unpleasant. And so there's some options to design a gas station that's a little more.
Maybe that wasn't a good example.
Yeah.
Let's say for instance, I wanted to build a three-story store or whatever. How far would it be from the nearest resident?
Mr. Myers? Not to cut you off, I'm sorry, I saw you were still talking. Please go ahead, sorry. One thing I will say is it's very important to keep in mind that these documents are intentionally high-level, just as our comp plan is, there's not regulatory language, and we're not in a position to speculate what current height may be or current setbacks may be. We can throw out numbers all day, but it will depend on applications as they come in. And really, the regulatory pieces come in in our zoning ordinance amendments. So this is a vision document to serve as a guidepost when someone's interested in doing a project in Goochlin County, whether it's residential or commercial. They know, okay, this can work potentially in this land use, this type of suggested use. Then they can come in to meet with the planning staff, and we're able to have a back-and-forth discussion and negotiate under, you know, how that moves forward and what the county needs and what's able to be done. If that helps.
Yeah, I'm still concerned about the three stories on the south side. I mean, what could you possibly do, you've got a three-story building, whatever, whether it's hotel or office or whatever it is, and single-story residence beside it. What kind of buffer can you do, put in there? I mean, is there anything not to have loss of privacy for those citizens? What do you do with that?
I, I think that's, that's where we would recommend implementing one of the transitions or some of them. So maybe it's stepping the building down. So sometimes, so for instance, what we call a step back is, let's say you have a 100-foot wide building, and that the 50 feet that front on Broad Street would be three stories, the 50 feet that front on the rear, on the residential-facing side, would be two stories. So you literally cut the top of the half, the half of the top story off, so that it drops it down in height. That's what, that's what we refer to as a step back, and we have some of those illustrations in here as to what that would be. And we would further that a bit. The other thing is just pushing the building further back, larger, a larger setback, so.
Well, it's, if you push it further back from Broad, you're closer to the residence.
No, the setback would be from the residential. So you, it would have to be further away from the residential property line.
Closer to the road.
Correct, closer to Broad Street.
And so, trying to get my head around, I really don't like the three stories on the south side at all. But if we were to approve this, and we could, and our plan is one, one to two stories, and we get an application that's three stories. Citizens don't like it, we don't like it, there's, we're not compelled to approve a three story, is that correct?
No, ma'am.
All right, good.
And just, I was just looking, a two-story home without an attic is 20 to 25 feet, and a three-story building is 33 to 40 feet. So talking additional maybe 10 feet.
Correct.
And in commercial now, what is the height, so it's designated commercial now, what could potentially go there by?
I'm sorry, could you repeat your question?
Sure, so it's currently designated commercial. Do we know how high it can go up now?
We will check our zoning ordinance if you hold please.
Assuming it's B1.
These are, there's some B1s. Yeah, these are mostly B1s along. Where we were talking about the edge, it's a B1.
Now, I'm struggling to find it because we're all here.
Just one.
So, in the B1 zoning district, maximum height, the principal structure.
It's 35 feet.
So three stories.
Yes, sir.
So it could be three stories now? Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, any other questions? Srecha?
One question I had, most of all, is answering my question, but are you prepared to give us some guidelines on the setbacks at the end of this process?
That is a next step, that's a recommended next step. And for land use, the design standards is priority one, along with priority two being zoning updates. So between blending those two, with building form, building height, kind of your setbacks, your transition elements, that really comes in with design. So again, that's something that we're prepared to act on as staff if the plan moves forward and is adopted. I will say, you know, we're already starting to work on elements from the courthouse village plan, so.
Because I would think a developer would have to know if he's between Broad Street and the residential, you know, whether he's three stories versus two stories versus 100 feet versus 200 feet. He has to have some idea what his parameters are.
Yes.
I don't need to request Mr. Chair's permission, maybe I can just interrupt.
Taking the night off.
There you go. Your back, your pay. So, I'm, for citizens out at home or here, I'm trying to compare these two maps, the original and the most current updated amended as further restated kind of map that we have over here that's been through several iterations. And it's a little bit like sitting in a tennis, tennis match here, I'm going back and forth trying to compare. Is there any change to the boundary?
No, the overall area boundary, no, sir.
So boundary lines are the same?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I'm trying to get at, keep things simple and get at the problems we're trying to solve here. I get this is a visionary document, and the temptation is to get down to the specifics very quickly, 10 feet, 50 feet. This is a visionary document. If you don't plan, you plan to fail all that, so we're planning, which is good. But what problems are we trying to solve inside the exterior boundary here? I guess we, the, the two that I see is both sides of Broad being the same, and then dotted lines around the residential to make sure that there's transitions. Is that the bulk of what's being proposed here, the changes? Are there big picture things here that I'm missing on that, or is it just really exterior boundaries the same? boundaries the same, both sides of Broad are contemplated being treated the same, and then dotted transitions where there's residential? Is that?
That is one of the major items that we are looking to get some clear direction on from tonight's discussion with you all as a board and the commission talking. The other piece that we're really looking for some direction on is making sure that we're, that there's consensus on clearly defining the future study area, that we're clarifying, providing clarity that the greenways and roads within the small area limits are just conceptual in their alignments only. You know, as a private development moves forward, that alignment may change as to where it is on a parcel, but it ties back to our major thoroughfare plan. The other piece really is getting some clarity on, you know, lodging. There were, there was discussion on lodging, we're recommending lodging within appropriate scale. So, it's getting that clarity and direction, but yes, that is the major item.
So, the lodging issue, north of Broad right now, lodging is permitted? The core versus the transition?
It was a proposed use, yes, that it would be permitted.
Currently or proposed?
Currently, I think it is.
It's currently allowed as well.
Currently, lodging is allowed north of Broad.
Yes, sir.
The contemplation would be to make it symmetric, and lodging would be allowed south of Broad, is that?
Yes, sir.
With obvious height restrictions, not?
Yes, sir. Within scale, yes, appropriate to scale.
Are there other, I'm trying to just summarize the, what's, we're being asked of the boards here so that we can weigh in and maybe or maybe not build a consensus around the, the central issues. I was going to say the core issues, but that's the central issues. Let me ask it another way, two, two more real quick ones, and then I'll yield back. Are there residual concerns from citizens, more than one citizen, that are not being addressed by the proposal? In other words, you're, I thought I heard something about middle ground and consensus, and are there folks' concerns that are not being addressed? What, what else out there is not being addressed by the, am I making myself clear at all?
Yes, sir.
Or am I confusing things?
Yes. I, I will say there are concerns that we've not addressed. I will say that there were a lot of one-off concerns. Again, when you're doing a planning process, it's, you're working to plan for a middle ground and planning for a collective as well as a long-term vision. It's very hard to meet individualist, individual preferences, especially when there's not a lot of coalescing around common themes. We've worked to coalesce what we've heard around the common themes with transition elements, transition zones, how we're treating certain land use categories, making sure that they're complementary of one another, and making sure that we're emphasizing things for clarity.
Okay. Well, you know, one of our goals is to make everybody happy all the time.
I try every day, and sometimes I always fail.
Sometimes we fall short. And I guess the follow-on from that is, if in doing these most recent changes and making certain folks happy, is that making other folks unhappy?
I, I would say.
Are we making everybody happy all the time?
I, I would say that that calls for speculation. I think it's six in one, half a dozen in another.
Yeah. Again, I'm trying to get at the residual concerns that may be left behind in this process, and I want to make sure that we bring all those concerns forward with us. The last piece, and this isn't meant to be trivia pursuit, data, I got you kind of thing, how much of this village boundary is in the Tuckahoe Creek Service District and has access to public water and sewer? The entire district or part of it? Because without that, obviously, higher-density uses are really kind of moot.
Correct. I will say that all of the area that is included is either in the Tuckahoe Creek Service District, or it's included in some way, shape, or form in our public utilities master plan efforts.
Public utility master plan efforts?
Yes, our master plan.
That would include areas that currently don't have access?
That do not have active water and sewer. So, we have some residential areas, and we have some residential areas that do not have water and sewer, but then there's access to water and sewer immediately adjacent. We also have commercial corridors, you know, right along Ashland Road that they could, they're in the service district, but they don't have municipal water and sewer.
That's my question. If you overlaid the boundary of the district, because you can't go outside the boundary, even if you wanted to do economic development, you can't drag the pipelines outside. So, if that boundary line is somewhere, again, it wasn't meant to be trivia pursuits, but you see where I'm going with that, that's what's really required to support higher-density uses. Without that, you've got lower-density uses by definition, so. All right. Well, I'll, I'll yield back that again. If we could maybe look into that later on and figure it out.
Yes. And I will say that the future study area that we've identified for calling out, that does have a water and sewer as well for economic development and higher potential density purposes, and that's to be determined.
Okay. Follow-up, Mr. Peterson. So, everything in the village, I guess the village core is in the Tuckahoe Creek Service District? That's a specific question, not available, are they in the district?
So, there are two different things. If you look at the, the parcels that are within the boundaries of the service districts, or the area that is, are eligible to join the district, you know, pay the aborum tax, you know, be eligible for getting public utilities, the entire village is in that area. They're, they're within the boundaries. Are they actually in the district or not? They're, they're, it's spotty. They would have, a lot of the properties would then have to ask to be in the district in order to be actually served by the water and sewer.
Okay. So, the answer was no, they're not all in district, but they're all eligible to be added in.
Yes, ma'am.
Right? Okay. Thank you.
I have a question, just from Ms. Anais. I know we're reiterating, but if someone brings a plan to develop in the core, can you please just give us a quick walk, walkthrough of the process that they're going to have to go through? Just because the visualization and the plan is very different from what people are contemplating, and I just want administration to speak to it.
Mr. Vodder, in your scenario, would it be with the south of Broad being in the core?
Yes, with the south of Broad in the core, yes.
That would occur similar to how any project application starts. It goes through the pre-application process, obviously, meeting with staff, there's a community meeting, there potentially is an agenda item or review by our design review committee, as well as coming to the planning commission and the board of supervisors with public hearings. There may or may not be a rezoning ordinance amendment that accompanies it, or it may just be something that goes through the plan of development process because it fits perfectly within what we're outlining as potential optional uses or combinations of uses.
Thank you. I, I just wanted you to reiterate that because it's not, us approving this plan does not mean something south of Broad is being developed tomorrow.
No, sir. And I will say, if this plan does move forward, no land use designations change with adoption of the plan. This is a vision document. So, again, it gives someone the ability to bring something forward to then say, and I know we have a lot of criteria that we look at when we have applications. One of those is, is something consistent with the comp plan. This would give the ability for staff to then assess based on the amended information that we have and what we've been working on through this process to say, does it or does it not, based on updated informations as we try to work to meet, you know, the needs of a designated growth area.
Thank you very much.
So, the, somebody, anybody? You were. I looked up there.
I'm here for you.
Yeah. So, this is a plan, this is a vision, the ordinances are written. What do we, so when the ordinances are written is when we talk about density? So, right now, I can't tell by looking at this what the density is, like six to an acre or?
Correct. So, so we do, we do discuss density on the residential pieces? The, the neighborhood residential and the single-family residential, but in the mixed-use areas and the economic development areas, we do not give a specific density range. Due to the fact that it's mixed-use, it, it, it can be somewhat challenging to get to a specific density because your mixing uses, it might be vertically, it might be horizontally. So, we want to provide that flexibility and allow the zoning ordinance and the app, the application that comes before you to determine what, what's the appropriate density on that.
Okay. And that makes a lot of sense. My question then becomes, how are the ordinances going to be written on density? So, we're saying it could be kind of whatever right now based on this plan.
Correct.
How are we going to write the ordinances on density?
That, that is a process within itself. You know, there's a lot of different ways you can go. You, you have traditional zoning ordinances, you have form-based code ordinances, you have hybrid form-based codes. So, what I would recommend is what we're, the direction we're, we're heading in with recommendations on building form is to really focus on height and size of buildings, and that, that flushes out the amount of units you can have in, in a property if you have appropriate setbacks and things like that. You can only fit so much into a building and make it compatible. That way, you, if, a good example is a very small mixed-use site can have a higher density range and still be totally appropriate, if three stories and it's just got two units above, but it's on a quarter acre. That's an awfully high density that happened really quick. So, by creating a little bit of flexibility there is what I would recommend. But again, that's a, that's a, that's a beast within itself to kind of tackle as far as specific densities in a zoning ordinance and how y'all as a community want to, want to move forward with that.
But in that example you give, and I could see your different mixes like apartments or whatever or above.
Correct.
Retail, like those kinds of things.
Correct.
But that doesn't change, that might change the aesthetics and the way it looks, but it doesn't change the amount of services that we would have to provide. So, density drives cost to the county, schools, fire EMS, public safety. So, density really matters. So, it doesn't matter whether they're above, below, around, whatever, the number of people per acre matters. So, I, I don't, you know, the form of it is not the issue.
It certainly does. And that's where, you know, in the state of Virginia here, we have proffers to offset those impacts based on the, the direct impacts of that project, and hopefully, those are mitigated when they're brought before you. And that's why you typically have an analysis of those impacts as part of your rezoning application, so that y'all can figure out, there's so many units, there's so much square foot of commercial or retail or whatever it might be, and you can determine those impacts as part of that, as well as traffic and schools, things of that nature.
All right. Good answer. Thank you.
Okay. So, how do we want to sort of, I mean, we've, great questions. Do we want to sort of talk around, like, how we're feeling about? Let's talk about the first one, the replace mixed-use transition with mixed-use core. And what got me more comfortable with that was? Yeah, south of Broad. So, what got me more comfortable with that is looking at the current plan and where things are. So, I, I'm, I'm comfortable with that. Well, the planning commission deferred this thing, so I want to make sure that we hear from the planning commission, you know, that, that y'all are getting, this is heading in a direction that you're comfortable with, the?
Yes. Yes, I've, I looked at all the proposed improvements on this sheet of paper, that, and I'm, I'm pleased that they responded to the majority of the citizens' comments that we've heard over the last couple of months. The thing that I worry about is, we operate a lot different than Washington does. Washington doesn't pay any attention to us down here, but we're a local people, and the people who live here have a vested interest in this, this thing. And I think all the improvements that they suggested, plus or minus some refining, I mean, you know, the devil's in the details, are a big improvement on the way we started with. So, I'm wholeheartedly in agreement with all of the items on this particular list that they've come up with so far.
Well, my concerns have pretty much been addressed, the, the difference in the use on, or south of Broad Street and the, and the transition. And the transition is still sort of a, a, a sticking point, because I'm not sure what it's going to be. Because, I mean, that's the reason I brought up the service station thing. Most people, as necessary as gas stations are, most people don't want to live in, at least those moving to Goochlin, would rather not live within eyesight of one. So, right here, if someone built a gas station, and that's, that's just an example, on Manneken Road at the northernmost point of the mixed core, how much transition would there be into, before they run into the neighborhood? And maybe there's no answer to that question right now.
Would you not still be able to see a shell sign from that location?
Because there's a gas station there now.
There's a gas station 200 yards away.
So, there's one, there's one there now.
Wait a minute. I'm talking about in, in, in Manneken Road.
Yeah.
Right there, there's a gas.
There's the gas station 200 yards away.
It's on Broad Street, right?
It's on Broad, right. Not on Manneken.
I, I'm just, I mean, that's just.
No, 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 no. Okay. That's on Broad, okay? I'm talking about on Manneken Road at the northernmost point of the, of the mixed core. On Manneken Road at the mix, at, right, right here, okay? What I'm saying is, if someone built a gas, they wanted to build a gas station right there, how far would it be? Because there's no gas station there now. All the gas stations are on 250.
Yes.
So, I mean, that's just a question.
You're talking about up on Sycamore Creek entrance?
Right. So, how far?
So, right now, the closest ones, just looking at the, the map is by Saddle Creek Parkway. So, it'd be down here. So, from here to here.
Well, my question is, okay, how, if someone built a gas station right there, when I'm, where I'm talking about, I don't know exactly where on Manneken Road it would be, but I don't know if any gas stations that far north of, of Broad Street. So, how far would it be from the residential section if you built it right there at the northernmost point of Manneken Road? I mean, on Manneken Road at the northernmost point of the mixed core section? How far would it be to the residential section?
I don't think anybody would want to build a gas station there.
But that's not the point. A, a gas station is allowed.
And it's allowed now?
It's allowed now. That's what I'm saying.
So, what is this, I don't understand how it impacts our decision for this plan?
Because I just wanted to note, because one of the sticking points was the neighbor, the neighbors said that there wasn't enough, or any, at first, there wasn't any transition between the mixed core and the residential there. What is going to be the transition now?
And I thought, what I heard staff saying is that's what they're working on, that they'll have for the planning commission meeting, what those potential transitions can be.
Okay.
Yeah. I mean, Johnny can see on the existing, there's no real designated transition on the proposed that red dashed line is probably where you couldn't build a gas station because it's a transition zone. That's yet to be defined. This is a visionary kind of thing. You would still have to go through the rezoning process and make it an up or down vote depending on, you know, what citizens think about it, so. Does that help?
I mean, 50 feet, 200 feet, 500 feet?
Take your pick.
That was the question.
It's like we're focused on, focusing on the specifics too much right now. I mean, I, I, I know citizens, and I would also want to know the exact footage of these things, but I don't think it can be, if we had to break it down, every single issue, every single case before it was ever brought up, we'd never get anything done. We've almost got to do it on a case-by-case basis.
Well, I'll assure you that the, at the public hearing, the good citizens of Goochlin County will bring it up.
Absolutely.
I'll, I'll make this comment. We have to have a vision and a plan to move forward. We can't be just locked up and not doing things based on what-ifs. What I've tried to stress and, and why I ask questions that I did was, we have the ability to come back and review these case by case. We are. We are not tied into any single element of this. We have a vision that we can bring to the business and the development community that helps Goochlin grow. And anybody who enjoys our tax rates and the benefits of living in this county, but has no desire to see top-line revenue grow, then oppose this. I'm sorry, this is something that is important to us for a vision, this is important to our community, and this is something we need to do. So, that's just my opinion.
Where are we landing on lodging? You talked about it a little earlier.
If you would put that under bed.
And I want to make sure, I mean... Removed as a primary use in the core and restate as lodging with appropriate scale. So, we weren't going to have appropriate scale before. It's kind of the, it's kind of the trend, same thing with the transition. I think we're just moving, moving pieces around, but I'm trying to understand what...
We can specifically list lodging in the mixed-use core. I would recommend that you do and say lodging at appropriate scale. We have listed it in the mixed-use transition.
Correct, and again...
Oh, it is on the second side.
I can't read them too far away.
Sorry.
So, it is listed as a primary use in the mixed-use core, so it would be allowed in North and South of Broad Street in the mixed-use core, but we would add the language appropriately scaled.
Well, in your proposed improvement sheet that we have here, the right side says remove it. Remove lodging as a primary use.
No, it doesn't.
As a primary use, making it secondary? We're also working to make sure that, that there's clarity. Because there was a concern of it being a primary, we're just working to provide clarity.
I'm sorry, I'm listening. And restate, so it's still a primary use, it's just restated as appropriate scale?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
So, again, it's trying to address the concern we heard and making sure that we still have something that there was desire to have, but that it's within scale and that it fits space and place.
Why would we do anything if it didn't fit and it wasn't a scale before, but...
Clarity.
It appeared that, I mean, there's certainly some concern expressed, and I believe a lot of that was, it could be a huge hotel, we don't want a big hotel in the core.
You've got, you've got height, you've got height limits.
Correct, so we just wanted to emphasize that. Yeah.
So, how do you write an ordinance that says appropriate scale?
That's where you always, as we read earlier, the height. So, you talk about the maximum height in that zoning district.
So, you're not saying height as far as the plan? The plan doesn't say height.
We already say up to three stories only in that village core.
And up to three stories is appropriate scale? Is that the, different words for saying the same thing?
Correct.
Oh, okay.
I believe so. You currently have some proposed developments, there are three stories and some large-scale grocery store that's essentially almost the same height.
Planner's book, right?
Trying to see what's out there now and what's planned.
Okay. Mr. Chair, there's nobody at the mic, somebody's got to step up. You wait to hear the question first before you... Yeah. A few years back, some of us recall, we spent a lot of time, an inordinate amount of time on figuring out what to do in the core when it pertains to mixed use. And we've got a couple of different mixed use, mixed-use core, mixed-use transition, mixed use, ensuring that what we actually end up with is a mixture of uses and not all multifamily and no commercial. And so, we came up with what's called an MPUD, mixed-use plan development, and it ensured with phasing and whatnot that the developer couldn't just build multifamily and run. And that would overwhelm the schools and so on and so forth. And we currently don't have an apartment zoning, so there's no apartments in Centerville because you can't rezone to one because there isn't one. But there is an MPUD which says if you want to do some multifamily like townhomes, then you've got to marry that with some economic development to make it a true mixed use. The question I'm building up to, I'm going to land this plane in a minute, is making sure that in changing the core, expanding the core, changing the definitions, adding lodging, that somehow we're not introducing that loophole where someone could build townhomes. For instance, in mixed-use core, it talks about residential per-en townhomes and multifamily, that someone, we're not introducing that loophole where somebody could just build a row of that. Now, understand by right, I guess you can build triplexes and townhomes, but no more than that. But you could have a cluster or a collection of those and end up with the same effect. So, I lay my concerns on that, that we've not introduced some loophole where we could end up with multifamily of whatever scale, two-story, three-story, and just a row of that and not end up with what we think we are going for, which is a mixed, true mixed use of some restaurants, some retail, some commercials, some, you know, mixed use.
Two things. So, one, you pointed out, a, good fact that what our existing zoning currently does or does not allow, and one of those is apartments. On page 25 of the plans, I know you all have a copy of those up on the dais, there is a table that actually is the current land use table, and it has a final column that actually correlates all of these proposed land uses to existing zoning and what it is most similar to. So, there is a tieback in some relational form to all of our existing zoning. For example, the mixed-use core is very similar to BN and our MPUD zoning.
The MPUD is what we referred to earlier.
Yes.
So, in the expanded mixed-use core, how do we ensure that we end up with true mixed use?
And I will also say, so that takes me to my second point, there is a page in here as well where we talk about housing types and forms. They are all, the closest that we got was, I believe it was a duplex and then a form of cluster housing. I'm working to get the exact page number. Oh, it's on the backside, page 24 of your plan. So, it talks about a townhome, a duplex, a single-family cluster, and then a single-family large lot. So, there's nothing in here that in this vision document that calls that out as far as apartment-style living.
So, there's, the townhomes are kind of a, looks like a triplex almost. Is that...
It's just three in a row. You know, you typically see three to four or so in a row, yeah.
And I could, could I build half a dozen of those in a cluster?
Well, let me preface this too. Nothing here, you still would have to rezone to your current zoning. So, anything that's in here doesn't open up the opportunity to do what we say in here unless your current zoning allows it. So, you can still only do what's allowed in the MPUD or what's allowed with your current zoning designations. The one recommendation that we did make is to consider your MPU reducing the total square acreage required for MPUD so that you can do the small-scale mixed use that you're asking for in a village core. Because right now, it's a very large size of property you have to have, and it's...
We put a lot of thought into that.
Yeah, yeah. True. So, it could go that way, but some of we have to buy a large, large area to try and create a village out there, yeah.
And be a true mixed use.
Correct.
And then there's phasing in there as well, so you don't build the multifamily first and wait 20 years to do the commercial. So, it was very intentional, very thoughtful, and I just want to make sure that what we're doing here doesn't open up a loophole to allow duplex, triplex, townhomes standalone by themselves in the mixed-use core and not end up with mixed use.
So, they hear you, because you don't rezone to the future land use, you have to rezone to a zoning district. And until that changes, what you have is what you have.
Yeah, and you're not doing a whole lot to assuage my fears here because things come in one at a time. Can I build a triplex? Sure, townhomes.
Yep.
Next one comes in, the next day, can I build a triplex? Sure, go ahead. Next one comes in. Where do you say, you're okay, you're not okay, you're okay, you're not okay? The idea behind the MPUD was, anybody that wants to do mixed use, come in, do it this way, and we end up with a mixed use. I just wanted to make sure nothing in this plan opens up that door to where it's not truly a mixed use at the end of the day. Because if they come in incrementally with smaller developments and they're not phased or whatnot, you could end up with just rooftops in the mixed-use core. And I want to make sure that we don't end up there, because there's a lot of money to be made that way. Put up a lot of multifamilies and sell them real quick and you're gone, rather than trying to find a tenant. So, that's one of my concerns, I'm not getting a whole lot of comfort, but...
I mean, that is a regulatory piece where we would determine size, space limitations through your zoning ordinance amendment that would be a next step in this process. And again, our goal is to try to create a vision document, so, you know, we also have the ability, as an application comes in, it sees the light of day and it goes to the planning commission, it comes to the board, and we get to have, you know, very intentional discussion on this. And staff does a very good job now of working to guide applications and making sure we're balancing things. You know, one of the things that this plan will also offer staff the ability to do is to work in the things that we heard as recurring themes through the public input process about having some recreational amenities, having more open space, having some availability for services or connectivity. And so, as applications come forward, we can have those discussions as well because that's listed in here. But it's not locked in, you know? There is a trail shown, but it doesn't mean it has to be there.
Yeah, I mean, I guess if it, if there were some language that said, no standalone multifamily because it's going to be part of a mixed use, otherwise you could end up with standalone multifamily, right? And one at a time comes in, you get a series of them, and anyway, just, I'm thinking out loud here, we're in a workshop, bouncing ideas around, and I just wanted, we spent an awful lot of time on this, making sure the MPUD was crafted in a way that, at the end of the day, there was very few ways to game the system and we would end up with a vision, actually the implementation of the vision that we were looking at.
So, this doesn't change anything with the MPUD, and the only, so what this does is say, if somebody wants to do an MPUD, they need to do it in the mixed-use core or the mixed-use commercial. Those are the only spots that they're really allowed, based, or encouraged based on the land use designation.
Okay, that would be for an MPUD, we'd have to be one of those two with a meat-all criteria. What about a triplex townhome that we just talked about that's on page whatever? Can that be a standalone and not be a mixed use?
We have, I mean, those would, again, what you're speaking about is zoning, and so this is just land use. So, not a regulatory document, it does not hold weight in terms of what is allowed and what's not. It just allows somebody to come forth with a proposal to...
So, I think the answer, if I'm hearing, is if you can do it now, you can. If you can't do it now, you can't.
Correct.
Is that...
That's exactly correct. Doesn't change at all what you can do. This allows somebody to propose something, that's it.
So, I agree that if you can do it now, the proposal is you can do it then. Right now, we're revisiting what we have now to solve whatever problems might exist.
Exactly.
Now's an opportunity to say, is there a loophole or not? That's all.
Exactly, exactly.
Mr. Peterson, if I may? I'm over here to your left.
Where is that coming from?
Behind your wall. What I'm hearing is, no, you couldn't do standalone MPUD, I mean, standalone residential because it's that zoning MPUD. Maybe there's a loophole where we've seen some standalone triplexes in our PUD. So, my question would be, is our PUD allowed in the mixed-use core? I think...
No.
Okay. That's the only possible way I could think of it, right? Because we have some townhouses in our PUD.
For instance, the townhomes down by the Richmond Country Club, the Creekmore area, those were done by right, is that right?
But as far as the MPUD, I think the clear answer is no.
Okay, like, I don't want to play Trivial Pursuit here and...
Right, no, it's, I mean, again, I don't have the zoning case in front of me or the map in front of me, but it's my understanding that was an R3 that did allow for that, or the RO that allowed for it. So, I think it was allowed by right, but it wouldn't necessarily translate to here. There are some opportunities, you know, for, through the RPUD in other areas in the Centerville area that would be eligible. Does that answer your question? I don't know the exact answer.
Again, I don't want to, thank you, appreciate your, you know, stepping up to the microphone while the other too much. Just kidding, just kidding. But, Mr. Chair, back to your point, you know, what's allowed now is going to be allowed, but if we're trying to reach a consensus on the vision, a consensus on the vision, that's one thing. Perhaps when we get to the next steps, we're going to go forward to challenge or task the staff as they go down to the next level and put together some details to make sure that we close that loophole, and there isn't a loophole to be able to do just a row of residential multifamily alone broad. Because I don't think that's the vision that we're all looking for when we talk about mixed use. So, that may be a follow-on, next steps kind of, but I would challenge and task folks to make sure that that loophole isn't open. That's all I have, I yield back. Okay. So, let me ask staff a question. It's nice, where I started this meeting, do you feel like you have what you need now from a consensus perspective from the board?
Somewhat, I think we're getting closer. I do think that having a specific consensus on the items, so, just so that I am clear, there is a consensus on the South of Broad portion that was mixed-use transition becoming part of the core.
Yes.
Yes, I think so, yes.
Additionally, just so that I'm clear, I feel, so by doing this, so that I'm clear and that we can work on a path forward, we have consensus on improving and creating some clarity and better responsiveness with some transition zones and outlining transitional elements.
Yes.
I think it's a huge desire.
Okay.
That's big, like, yes.
Lastly, also making sure that we are being mindful of clearly calling out our future study area as that's evolving, as well as making sure that we're notating that greenways and roads within the small area limits are conceptual only. Oh, and then I forgot the last one to put to bed. Sorry, I'm going to work that one in again too. So, maybe now someone will laugh. The lodging with an appropriate scale, which already we have the height and it's just a way of stating it so it's reinforced within the text of the document as well as within the table.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Based on that, I do think that staff has the ability to work with the consensus provided to address what we've heard from open houses as well as public hearing.
Okay, great. So, I heard, you know, so this was deferred, so I might look to our deputy county attorney. What is the desire for the planning commission?
Would you like me to answer that, or Ms. Jackson?
Well, whoever, whoever can answer.
She's having a...
What was the question about setting a date for the planning commission?
Yes, so, what's the planning commission's desire to hear this next? When can they hear it next?
I do believe the planning commission has a July 6 work session where they could officially set a date, but there's nothing that precludes us this evening from discussing a consensus on a date so that staff, as we work through the changes, can also prepare public notices as necessary.
So, what you're saying is because it's a work session, we can't vote on...
Typically, you would not vote on a date. Staff recommends dates, and staff is the one that brings things to the planning commission. I know we've had some loose discussions on trying to pull some dates, and I have verified that staff and other resources are available July 24th or July 25th, which is after the July 6 work session. That's a Monday and Tuesday.
I thought somebody had a conflict on Monday.
No, sir. I think we had talked about the 27th, and that was...
It was, five people are available on Tuesday.
Sorry, five are available on Tuesday potentially, and four would be available on the 24th.
So, we'll do the 25th, I think.
Yes, ma'am. So, again, staff's just looking for a consensus on that, so then we can work on targeting when we have to do public notices, because I will say the law does change July 1 for public notice requirements.
And if they have that on the 27th, then we wouldn't be...
20, 25th.
I'm sorry, 25th. We would not be able to hear that in August.
You, the earliest you could hear it as a board would be August 7th. That is the earliest you could hear it, based on public notice requirements.
Okay, and is that a regularly scheduled board date?
No, that is the week after. But again, that is the earliest you could hear it.
Okay.
The week of August 7th. It's the first.
Be the first thing.
The week of August 7th. So, I started my week on a Monday, not a Sunday, because that's when I come into work.
Yes, so August 1st is our board... Okay. Okay, anything else, folks?
Officially adjourned the Planning Commission meeting.
Thank you, and I will adjourn our Board of Supervisors meeting until July 3rd. Thank you, we are adjourned.
Leave quickly. I'm serious.